Okay. I pulled it out only because we had, over the period of time, maybe the summer and just before the end of the school year, people who had approached us in regards to, they had applied for principal directors, and we were told that there were no applicants that met the criteria. And, you know, we had five elementary schools that that would involve. And I just, you know, candidates themselves who said that they passed in their stuff and didn't ever receive a call, you know, saying that, you know, "We received your application, but you're not, you know, in the run for being interviewed." And it was just concerning to me because all of these people were within our system. They say that they have the qualifications, yet they didn't get an interview. And we had it on our policy, you know, that anybody within the system, as well as if they lived in Lynn, you know, would get an interview, you know. And I know it does say they have to meet the qualifications, but these are people working here that say they meet the qualifications. I know that it's kind of a confusing write-up of the screening procedure policy, but I would like it to be maybe cleaned up a little bit and actually, you know, because we have five interim principals right now, so eventually we are going to reach the point where we're going to be doing, you know, another job posting for the principal jobs with interviews. And I don't want that to happen again. It doesn't help for morale in the school system. And I don't know whether it just requires that, you know, they definitely get an interview, whether somebody thinks they meet it or they don't meet it. I'm not sure.
Member Magnolia.
Thank you. So I guess my concern is actually chronicled in the title. It's called the Screening Procedures Policy. And my understanding of what belongs in our policy manual is not procedures. So it seems to me like what the policy committee needs to do is take the suggestions. MASC has given us a couple of language suggestions for recruiting, posting of vacancies, and hiring, that the abiding principle for a policy is an overarching goal, not the minutia of a procedure. Procedures should not be in a policy manual because they can be shifted much more easily than, I think the last time the entire procedure, a policy manual went through was quite a long time ago. So this needs to be in the realm of policy, not in the realm of procedure, is my sense. And because MASC has given us some suggested language, I would agree with Member Capola, but it's not going to have 20 steps that say first this, then this, then that, because that's entirely procedural. So I understand what Member Capola is saying, but that would be a separate issue. The policy just should have abiding goals for how we approach screening, promotions. I mean, if you look at, you know, it's called promotions academic titles. None of this really tracks with what it's trying to do. So I think the whole thing just needs to be started over, and it needs to specifically adhere to, again, what a policy should be, an overarching or abiding goal for how we look at hiring. And we can use the MASC language, we can put more into that MASC language, but the thing we should not do is make it procedural.
Member Gailey.
Well, this screening procedures policy was revised and approved by the school committee on March 27, 2014, so it was not back in 1993 when all the policies were aligned. I can understand where you may be confused or question the word procedures and have it listed, but in the past, I believe that the school committees was having problems with how to go about hiring and what is the right hiring practice for Lynn. So they made this, and I quite frankly like it. I like to know the steps. I like to know that I have, like, number nine, the committee chairperson shall extend an invitation to each school committee member to observe each interview and provide school committee members with the interview schedule and information packet on each candidate. I like that. I want to do that. I want to do that about the superintendent search. So I really don't think we should change this right now. I think we should leave it the way it is. This was made specifically with the issues that Lynn was having, and I don't think those issues have changed.
Sorry, Member Castellanos.
So have we, so I know the MASC, excuse me, MASC has language. Have we also maybe have, have we had a conversation with our compliance officer yet about this issue? I think maybe we should have, maybe, you know, when we talk about the, any type of, so 327, 2014, right now it's 2022. If we're seeking to do any type of revision, I do recommend that we do, we do partner with our compliance officer and just maybe see what revisions are needed, what are necessary, what kind of tweaks or updates for the screening procedure policy, if we have to modify the name or whatever. There's 20 different steps. See what's viable, see what's not, maybe have a deeper, robust collaboration with the committee chairperson. I like number nine. I like, actually, I like that, I like that piece to stay. But also, in terms of just what the procedures are and how we label it, I think it's important to make sure, I think we do need to ensure our compliance officer is there on the forefront. That's just my thoughts. And the administration, maybe organize how we want to attack that, because that is important, especially when it comes to, you know, promotions and being able to, for me, you have five different elementary schools, and if folks, you know, we have to have a process that's transparent and equitable and offer that, and have a process that's actually effective for us internally. And also, there's the compliance piece too. So I think there's certain, there are certain protocols that we already have in place. Figure out, you know, where could we improve and pick apart, you know, 2014 to now, it's the educational environment has changed a bit. So I think it would be important to, as we have this discussion, to really start to add the right people to the table.
I guess seeing any more comments or, does anybody else have anything they want to add to the discussion? Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we need to take this back to the policy subcommittee, talk to Attorney Gallo, our compliance officer, have him take a look at it. And Member Capola's concerns about just making sure that this is followed closer when we do make hires, I think is going to be important as well. Member Magnolia, yes.
Yeah. So one concern that I have that has to be reflected is that this does not specify, other than saying for principals, we'll do this specific. This is a blanket policy for every single person in the entirety of Lynn Public Schools, which means if the folks who like it now, we would be out of compliance with our own policy every single time someone is hired if we don't do all 20 steps. And that, to me, is deeply problematic. So I respect what Member Gailey is saying, but I'm going to respectfully disagree that this doesn't set us up for failure because it doesn't specify the level at which the school committee is supposed to be involved. Now, if we're talking about supervisory roles, or if we're talking about at the level of administrators only, that's a different type of policy than one that's just a blanket LPS policy. And as I read through this, it does specify some procedures for folks who are in certain categories, but it doesn't say that this applies only to them. It applies to all hiring. And that, to me, is setting us up in a way that we would be out of compliance with our own policy every time we hire anyone and don't follow these 20 procedures. So I think we have to both look at our compliance officer, but also craft a policy that can reasonably be carried out all the time. I am going to speak for myself as somebody with a full-time job, a family, and yes, a tremendous dedication to this school committee, but I do not want to be on the hiring committees for the 100 people that we, you know, hired recently. So I want to make sure this is scalable, again, for Lynn, for the place we find ourselves.
Member Gailey.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Member Capola, but in March 27, 2014, wasn't Gallo on the school committee?
Yeah, I think he was.
He was on the school committee, so he will be able to clarify all your issues, Ms. Magnolia, Dr. Magnolia. So I think that we need, you need, as a subcommittee, to go and talk with him. He'll explain the background of it. You'll have a better understanding. I understand your concerns that we could be breaking the policy, but there was a reason it was put in this way, and there was a reason that it was step by step, and I think you need to clarify that before you move on. Thank you.
Superintendent Roggerio, sorry.
I just want clarification. It talks about academic titles. Ed reform, so school-based administrators with ed reform, principals do those hires. They do do committees within the building, but there's, number two asks for, I'm sorry, number three asks for the approval of school committee to approve the position. Is that every position? So that's a question for me. What does academic titles mean? Is it executive director, district-level administrators, principals, or is it all administrator? Like, I need to know. Listen, I will say, I will say, as someone who went through a hiring committee for various jobs throughout my career, I 100% agree that we need the committees. We just did the executive director of SEL, we had a committee. We had, you know, two school committee members on that committee. We're doing other positions, we're doing other interviews that are coming up. I have created a committee, but it clearly says in here, less than five. I don't need to have a whole committee, but I'm doing a committee. So I don't want to break the rules. I don't want, I want to make sure that anyone from Lynn Public Schools or the City of Lynn has a right to interview. I agree with that. But the way this is written, it is confusing.
Nicolausen, and then Member Capola.
Thank you. So I think obviously a lot of questions here and some great work for the policy subcommittee to do. I feel like it's helpful context that we had discussed this a few weeks ago, and, you know, this issue, and Ms. Presser, who we've retained from MASC to advise us on the overhauling of the policy manual, had advised us that there are some issues with ed reform, some conflict with the policy. And as we all know, that in a conflict between a school committee policy and the state education law, the state education law governs. So, you know, I do think we should be really careful about that. I mean, the good news is that we have retained Ms. Presser, who advises on this, and we've been working our way through the process of updating all the policies into best practice and, you know, making those edits as we see fit from the proposed policies from the MASC. So it does seem like that's what we need to do here. You know, the other issue we identified, we're working through the policies, you all recall, is that there are some issues with the records themselves in terms of what was approved and when it was approved that created some of the problems. And so I think we've made a lot of progress in cleaning up those sections we've addressed, and this is obviously a section that needs to be addressed as well.
And Member Capola.
I see exactly what Superintendent Roggerio was saying, and even when I looked at it, I knew there were things in there that don't apply to us. I mean, the hiring of teachers or anybody within the school building, that isn't what I think, what I think when these things were added on, they were meant for maybe administrative jobs from principals up. And I think that's, you know, where the policy should go, and, you know, a lot of this should be eliminated and changed. But, you know, somewhere, I wouldn't want that to get lost, you know, as far as having screening committees, because I think that we're a really large system, and I think people should have that opportunity to be able to do that, and as well as people who live in our community, you know, who would like to be invested in the school system and have a chance at an interview. So I definitely think there's a number of things here that we are out of sync with, and I'd like to see it just taken back and worked on.
So seeing no further comment. Concerns? Member Magnolia?
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Second. Roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay. Adjourned.
The 17th regular meeting of the school committee, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Penya?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
Please rise for a salute to the flag, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we recognize in memoriam Robert Bruce Harrison, a former teacher who passed away October 6, 2022. First item in the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meeting on October 27, 2022, and accept the minutes of the meeting for the 16th regular meeting on October 27, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Appointments.
Well, so I am so pleased to announce the appointment of Tina Hofnagle as the Executive Director of Social Emotional Learning. Tina has been a clinician in the district for 20 years, beginning her career at the Welcome Elementary School in 2002. She then went on to service the Cobbett learning community for multiple years until she entered a district-level position in 2016 as a program specialist for parent and family engagement. She transitioned to Assistant Director of SEL in 2019. In all of her roles, Tina has been an integral member of the LPS team in creating the vision, developing the model, and supporting the learning in her SEL work. Tina Hofnagle is clinically accomplished and a well-respected social worker who will lead the SEL department with incredible commitment and expertise. And I just want to note that the committee that interviewed, it was 11 to 0 that she was the one, and we asked her to come back down for a follow-up question, and she got a standing ovation when she walked in. So we are very thrilled to have her a permanent member of our team.
Thank you all so much. Those are really amazing words.
You can sit just so then you can talk into the microphone, please. Yeah.
I'm really honored to have this appointment and to sit here tonight and to just thank each one of you. I really trust and hope that I will serve well this amazing district that has served me in my career as well. So I'm looking forward to continuing the work that we've started as a district, as a clinical team, and I look forward to the opportunity to bring SEL practices forward K to 12 and support the emotional and social and mental health learning for our students. So I thank you all, and I'm quite humbled by this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Next item is the MCAS access update from the superintendent.
And here we go. Tonight I'll be sharing our 2022 access MCAS data. I feel I need to be upfront right from the start that what is going to be shared tonight will not make us feel good. It will be disappointing, disheartening, and will cause concern for all of us. At the same time, we need to understand that there can't be finger-pointing as to what is at the root of this data. There has been a bigger impact here, the pandemic being a big part of it. Many districts are seeing how the pandemic has impacted student performance and growth, and we are no different. Our students must be our priority. We, as a community, need to rally to elevate our students' needs ahead of our own. The 2022 accountability data, this is the first release of accountability information since 2019. Under federal regulations, flexibility was granted for one year. The Department of Education reported less accountability data than usual. This year's information includes data on all accountability indicators and school percentiles. It does not include targets for those indicators or measures of progress towards targets. And the 2022 data will be considered as a new baseline moving forward. I don't know if you remember, years back, we had started with a baseline, and then the targets and accountability went from there. The Department of Ed has made a decision that this will be a new baseline, and target setting will resume next year, 2023. I want to note here that LPS has not had a typical testing year since 2018. If you remember, 2019, we had the technology issues, so that impacted our testing. 2020, there was no testing because of COVID. 2021, students returned to in-person just in time for MCAS testing. The last two and a half school years have not been normal, so the results are going to be different. Spring of 2023 should be a typical testing and accountability year. I wanted to start just by kind of grounding us in who our students are and what populations we serve. And so it's important for us to remind ourselves on who our students are. During the school year 2021-22, our district had 15,727 students in our enrollment. Out of this enrollment, 69.1% of our students are Hispanic, which equals about 10,867 students. 64.2% of our students' first language is not English, and that's also about 10,096 students, with 36.3% of our students are English-language learners, which was about 5,700 students. 76.3 are economically disadvantaged, which is about 12,000 students, and 85.8 of our students are considered high-needs, and that's about 13,493 students. And just to give you an update on this year's enrollment, I found out today, thanks to Rania, we just hit 6,500 Ls in our district, which is now 39.3% of our enrollment are considered Ls. In K to 3, we're at 65% of the students are Ls, and in K to 4, 61%. So I think we really need to think about who we're serving and how we're serving them. This slide is a slide that actually was, it's a Department of Education slide. It was part of the urban superintendent presentation, as well as the presentation that was done for all superintendents. Student, and basically, they were reporting out the student absenteeism remaining to be a challenge for recovery efforts. Students have attended less school over the past several years. Statewide, the average student missed 11 days in 2021 and 15 days in 2022. 18% of all students missed 10% of school days in 2021, and 28% missed 10% of school in 2022. Chronic absenteeism for students in grades 3 to 8 increased in 2022 by 138% in the state. 41,000 versus 98,000 students as compared to 2019. 39% of students in urban school districts missed 10% of school days in 2022. 1.7 million days of missed school because of positive COVID-19 cases in 2022. So this slide represents that statewide chronic absenteeism data, and state data shows that urban districts were adversely impacted by COVID, as noted by the 39% of students in these districts missing 10% or more days in 2022. So what does that mean for Lynn? Let's put it in perspective. If each case, so this chart represents the number of cases for students and staff that we had in school year 21-22. For students, we had 3,254 cases, and for staff, 966 cases, for a total of 4,220. If each case represents one person, then that is the 4,220 cases out of an estimated population of 18,000 teachers and students. This means 22% of our population was potentially absent for five to 10 days at a time, at a time due to positive COVID cases. That represents a potential of 42,200 COVID-sick days, which does not include the number of absences due to potential exposure to the virus, like close contact, that had to stay home. And it also doesn't include the typical absences. Remember that these are just COVID-related absences, and the impact of this is quite This is our chronic absenteeism, the historical data for it, from 2011 right up to 2022. The percentage of students missing 10% or more of their days enrolled, the chronic absenteeism rate includes both excused and unexcused absences, and is calculated for students in grades pre-K to 12. This slide is here deliberately to highlight the profound impact on LPS. By 2020, we had made strides in reducing this rate, but the return of in-person learning in 2021 was greatly impacted, has greatly impacted absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism here represents excused and unexcused absences. 42.1% represent that almost half of our students were chronically absent during 21-22. Heading into COVID, we were seeing a three-year downward trend in our chronically absent rate. The COVID cases directly impacted this progress, and as a result... The COVID cases directly impacted this progress, and as a result, our students' progress. I also wanted to note the way our testing was administered over the past four years. 2019 was an abnormal year due to the technology issues, so that testing, we did do a full test administration, but the testing was paper. In 2022, I mean, in 2020, it was a full test administered for access, but no testing administered for MCAS. In 2021, access testing was remote instruction. In-person testing, though, we brought our Ls in to do access testing during that year. For MCAS, it was remote instruction and half test administered in-person for 3 to 8, and full test administered for grade 10. And in 2022, access was full test administered, and so was MCAS in both grade spans. Okay, overall school accountability percentile. An accountability percentile between 1 and 99 is reported for most schools. The number is an indication of the school's overall performance relative to other schools that serve similar grades, and is calculated using multiple years of data for all accountability indicators. School percentiles are not calculated for districts. Please note that on this slide, there are two schools that are not shown here because they have fewer than 20 students who participated in testing, and the state does not report on that. This data shows that we have five schools below the 10th percentile. These five schools will receive targeted support, both from the district and from the state. As a reminder, this year will be a baseline year going forward, and per the Department of Ed, no additional schools will be placed in turnaround status. Prior to COVID, many of our LPS schools were making great progress and gains in raising student achievement. COVID impacted everyone. District-wide, we can see the impact of COVID. So, let's look at ELA specifically. ELA scores in both LPS and the state level continued to decline in 2022. The state has noted that the biggest decline was in grades 3 to 5 in ELA, and the question remains, is the decline over? This slide represents the three-year change of percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. As you can see, in ELA, both the state and LIN public schools have seen a decrease in the number of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations across all grade bands since 2019. The range for each proficiency level is on the bottom right of this slide for your review. This graph represents an overview of the percent of students at each achievement level in ELA on the 2022 MCAS. Of note, grade 10 has 31% of students meeting expectations and 2% of students exceeding expectations. In the elementary grade band, we see fewer than 20% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. These results demonstrate our new baseline and show the gravity of COVID's impact. Thus, we're choosing to focus strategically and intentionally on our students' critical needs. We must afford our students new opportunities to lean into systems and supports. You will see examples of our key actions later in this presentation. This slide represents the number of students in each school who are meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA, with the orange bars representing 2019 and the blue bars representing 2020. As you can see, the names of the schools have intentionally been redacted in an effort to demonstrate an overall decline across all schools in our district. Here tonight, our focus is not to single out any one school, but rather to shift our efforts to a collective improvement across all schools. This overall decline further emphasizes the need to be more strategic about how we engage our students. This slide is hard to look at. I have to be honest, I've not slept all week. This has not been easy. This data hits home for all of us. There is no question that we have a lot of work to do here. Our lower grade levels showed a much greater decrease in performance than the high school grades. Even our highest-performing schools were not immune to the impact of COVID on learning. Here, you can see the ELA student growth percentiles, or SGP, comparing 2019 to 2022. Student growth percentiles provide a measure of the degree to which a student's achievement has changed from the prior year to the current year, in comparison to other students in the same grade who performed similarly in the past. Typically, student growth percentiles fall between 40 and 59%. The majority of our schools fell within that range. Additionally, seven of our schools saw an increase in their student growth percentiles. The ELA yearly comparisons by demographics and select populations. This graph shows the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations by subgroup, with 2019 in orange and 21 in yellow and 22 in blue. In 2019, in grades 3 to 8, 38% of all students met or exceeded expectations compared to 8% of students with disabilities and 12% of our Ls. Similarly, in grade 10, 37% of all students in 2019 met or exceeded expectations compared to 7% of students with disabilities and 1% of Ls. It's important to note that while our Ls are at 12% in 2019 for grades 3 to 8, our former Ls, so students who tested out and are now former Ls, are 42%, which is a significant number of students who met or exceeded expectations. Similarly, in grade 10, our Ls are at 1%, while our former Ls rise to 21%. We see the same pattern in 21 and 22. What this data shows is that our former Ls are achieving, while also highlighting our need to focus on our most marginalized students, Ls and students with disabilities. Another point is the continuation of our students of color, African-American and Hispanic populations, not achieving at the same rate as their peers. Clearly, we have a lot of work to do in this area, and while we have begun our hope and healing work, there is still plenty to do to address this clear difference in performance. The Commissioners District for 2022 ELA MCAS. This is a variation of a scatter plot, which compares student growth percentile to the average scaled scores. Here, the data points are replaced with bubbles, and the size of the bubbles represent the relative size of the data point. In this case, each bubble represents one of the Commissioners Districts in grades 3 to 8 for ELA. Notice LIN in yellow. As you can see, LIN is situated towards the middle of the Commissioners District. Ideally, we would want to see both high student growth and high average scaled scores, putting us in the upper-right corner of this graph. Again, there is work to be done to move us closer to the state. Here is grade 10's ELA comparison, the same graph for grade 10. LIN in yellow, again, falls towards the middle of the Commissioners District. Now, let's look at math. This slide represents the three-year change of percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations in math. As you can see, LIN Public Schools is on trend with the state in terms of the numbers of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. The green highlight signifies that math scores in grades 3 to 8 show the beginning of recovery in 2022. Similar to ELA, this graph contains an overview of the percent of students at each achievement level in math on the 2022 MCAS. At every grade level, fewer than 20% of students are meeting or exceeding expectations. Again, as we saw in ELA, there is an urgency to respond to the needs of our students. The next slide contains the percentage of students in each school who are meeting or exceeding expectations in math, with the orange bars representing 2019 and the blue representing 2022. And like ELA, there has been a significant decline in the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations across all schools. These drops are consistent with the data that we have looked at so far and correlated with disruptions connected to COVID. Here is the... Sure.
Just to clarify a question, or?
Yeah, just to be quick, not really to stop your presentation. Are we going to be able to see the schools and eventually some documentation so we can see the schools afterwards?
So, I did provide you with a document that shares who the schools are by number.
Sorry.
So that you have that information.
Thank you.
Here, you can see the math student growth percentiles comparing 2019 to 2022. And as a reminder, the student growth falls between 40 and 59. We had 19 schools fell within that range in 2022. Here is math yearly comparison by demographic and selected populations. This graph shows the percent of students exceeding and meeting expectations by subgroup, again, with 2019 in orange, 2021 in yellow, 2022 in blue. For example, in 2019, in grades 3 to 8, 38% of students exceeded or met expectations compared to 11% of students with disabilities and 15% of Ls. Similarly, in grade 10, 38% of all students in 19 exceeded or met expectations compared to 10% of students with disabilities and 4% of Ls. It's important to note that while our Ls are at 15% in 2019 for grades 3 to 8, the former Ls, again, were higher, at 41%, which is a significant number of students who met or exceeded expectations. And similarly, in grade 10, we saw the same thing, 4% for Ls, while former Ls rose to 38%. We see the same pattern for 21 and 22, and like ELA, this data shows that our former Ls are achieving, while also highlighting our need to focus on our most marginalized students, the Ls and students with disabilities. And here is the Commissioners District math scatter plot, comparing student growth percentile to average scale scores for grades 3 to 8 in math. And you can see that LIN is highlighted in yellow here. LIN's placement on this graph illustrates the work to be done in our district. And again, ideally, we would want to see both the student growth and the high average scaled score, putting us in that upper-right-hand corner of the graph. And then here is grade 10, the same graph, and you can see LIN is not in a good place. And so, let's now look at science. Again, this represents the three-year change of percent of students meeting or exceeding for grades 5, 8, and high school biology MCAS for 2019 to 2022. We will start by looking at the grade 5 and 8 Science, Technology, and Engineering MCAS results. As you can see in the final column of this data table, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations on the grade 5 and 8 Science MCAS have decreased significantly from 2019 to 2022. However, a positive change in scores from 21 to 2022, at an increase greater than that of the state, showing the beginning of recovery here. Please note that 2022 was the first administration of the Next Generation MCAS High School Biology and Physics testing. Next Generation and Legacy MCAS scores are not comparable. And it is also important to note that the 2022 High School Biology results reflect a combination of scores of students who took the June 2021 legacy test, and students who took the February 2022 legacy test, and some students who took the June 2022 Next Generation test. So, it's a combination of all three. Here is the Science MCAS results by achievement level. It, you know, it shares the 2022 Science MCAS tests and how our students achieved at each grade level. This slide contains the percentage of students in each school who are meeting and exceeding in science, with the orange bars 2019, blue 2020. Remember that 2022 was the first administration of the Next Generation High School Biology testing, and Next Generation and Legacy is not comparable. And you can see a big difference there. And here are the subgroups. It's showing, you know, percentage of students exceeding by subgroup. For example, in 2019, in grades 5 and 8, 41% of students exceeded or met expectations compared to 25% of students with disabilities and 8% of Ls. It's important to note that while the 8% of Ls in grades 5 to 8 exceeded or met expectations in 2019, 37% of former Ls exceeded or met. And we see, again, the similar patterns in 2021 and 2022. What this data shows, again, is that our former Ls are achieving, while also highlighting the need to focus on the other two groups. Since 2022, the first administration of Next Generation MCAS High School Biology testing, 2019 and 2021, scores can't be compared, so you're only seeing 2022. And here, you can see LIN compared to the Commissioners District. The bar graph compares the 2022 grades 5 and 8 average scale scores to the Commissioners Districts, and of the Commissioners District, LIN is outperformed only by New Bedford. And here is grade 10. LIN is in the middle of the pack. There is work to be done to move us up in this group. This chart represents the change in MCAS average scale score from 2019 to 2022. Clearly shows that all grade levels have had a decrease in the average scaled score in ELA, math, and science, with the largest decreases in the younger grades. This is consistent with the state's analysis of MCAS across the state. And this chart is showing the MCAS growth in ELA and math by grade. Student growth percentile is only provided for students who have tested two or more years, and as you can see, our Ls and students with disability subgroups are showing less growth than all student subgroup in both ELA and math. LPS making English language proficiency progress, four-year trend. Although 2020 was a COVID year for M- Although 2020 was a COVID year for MCAS with no MCAS testing conducted, access testing had been completed during the COVID shutdown. In 2021, almost all students were being taught remotely, and Ls had to come in on access testing days to take the access test. After a dip in 2021, making progress towards English language proficiency, all grade spans showed growth in 2022 as they approached the 2022 levels. Our 2022 data shows an increase. However, we are still behind where our students' progress was in 2019. And here shows our historical four-year graduation rate. Graduation rates are at a 12-year high. This is an area we have been making some progress in since 2010. It would be important to note that graduation requirements were adjusted in 2020 and 2021 with the CD completion. Students need to pass the ELA math and science class rather than pass the MCAS test. That was what the adjustment was. They just had to pass a class and not pass the test. We will need to monitor this data going forward because we're going back to that they need to pass the test. And this chart or graph shows historical graduation rates. Oh, no, historical dropout rates, sorry, over from 2010 to 2021. Dropout rates are at a 12-year low. The dropout rate is another area that our high schools have put a great deal of effort in through their work with the Mass Grad Grant. We continue to lower this data but need to continue to work on addressing the number of Ls who are dropping out as they make up much of the students who are dropping out. So to give just some data highlights after that, in science, in grades five and eight, there was a slight bounce back on scaled scores from 2021 to 2022. This was a bigger increase than the state. Former Ls in grades five, eight, and 10 performed at least as well as the all-student group for scaled score averages. In ELA, LPS shows signs of rebounding in grades three to eight and grade 10 at a greater rate than the state is. Starting with grade six, LPS steadily increased the percentage of students in the meeting and exceeding proficiency levels while decreasing the percentage of not-meeting expectations. Former Ls in grades three to eight and 10 performed at least as well as the all-student group for scaled score averages. And at the high school level, the Hispanic Latino demographic groups closed the achievement gap with the all-student group. And in math, in grades three to eight, with the students with disability group and the L group, along with all the demographic groups noted in this presentation, stayed at least the same as 2021 and, in most cases, improved in the percentage of student at the meeting and exceeding proficiency levels. And former Ls in grades five, eight, and 10 performed at least as well as the all-student group for scaled score averages. And finally, looking at all grades and student growth percentiles, the English learner group was nearly identical to all-student group. Oh, sorry, not finally. And then the English learners making progress. After a dip in 2021, making progress towards English language proficiency, all grade spans showed growth in 2022 as they approached the 2020 levels. Graduation rates were at a 12-year high and dropout rates were at a 12-year low. So our data clearly shows that the pandemic has impacted our students and that their performance greatly. We have a lot of work to do. We now still share the key action, we will now share the key actions that we're taking during the 22-23 school year. We are focusing in on three areas: Strengthen district-wide social-emotional supports, LPS strategic plan focus, and the academic enrichment and supports. So strengthen district-wide social-emotional supports. We all know that we have implemented the new clinical model, almost 400% increase of school-based clinicians. This includes 65 clinicians and 23 clinical supervisors. We have the addition of a second Assistant Director of Social Emotional Learning. We build capacity of the clinical team via clinical supervision, professional development, and accountability. We promote students' sense of belonging via SEL practices. We're utilizing the CASL indicators of school-wide social-emotional learning work. And we continue to implement the Caring Schools community in K-5. Key action two, this represents, so this is where this document that I gave to you, the laminated card, this represents the work being done across schools and across all educator levels. This work stems from compiling information and listening to the voices of our building leaders and our staff. We work together with our school leaders to align our work from the district down to the classroom level with consistent systems that include the voices of staff who are doing the work. With that collective focus, we heard their voice by conducting a list-sort-label activity and created this one-page document, which we provided a copy of, on our collective focus for the school year 22-23. We wanted to make sure we were all moving in the same direction in regards to our stated objectives and outcomes of our district's strategic plan. We have taken the data from the list-sort-label and zeroed in on three focus areas to guide our work, leveraging our current work and building capacity in other areas. The three focus areas are professional learning, data analysis, and curriculum and instruction. In each focus area are explicitly named prioritized practices that will be implemented at the principal-director level and at the elementary and secondary level. Part of acceleration, as we have seen, is to implement prioritized practices. In order to do that, we must be on the same page on what is prioritized. Of course, these practices are not the only things happening in the school or district, but as a group, we will be consistent about these focus areas and practices in relation to our goal of the entire school year. These focus areas and prioritized practices are explicitly connected to our strategic objective of supporting students and educators to reach their fullest potential. We are going to provide you with a more detailed presentation on these systems and focus areas at our next meeting. So we will go more in detail around the work that's happening across the district with this. And then our third key action, academic enrichment and supports. We are currently working with our schools to set up additional after-school learning opportunities to help our students regain the lost learning experienced over the past couple of years. As you are aware, we have also begun implementing multiple curriculum resources in multiple content areas, as well as implemented new ELA courses in the high school level for our students, which is certainly not easy for our teachers, but necessary in order to provide our students with high-quality curriculum resources that can support the teaching of the Massachusetts standards we are required to teach and to help our students master. None of this is easy but is necessary in order to help our students move forward. So this is our last slide, and I wanted to return to it. It's the first slide. It's the students. So I wanted to return back to where I started, where I began. And I know that I'm not feeling good right now after speaking about the ways our students have lost ground in their learning and growth. It is truly hard to think about. We need to look at our students' faces and see our duty as adults and as educators to serve them in the journey of regaining their education. Our students need us more now than ever before. The field of education has always been difficult, but it's even more difficult now. We, as a collective community, need to rally around our students, help them regain the traction that they lost as a result of the pandemic. This is what education is about, and we owe it to them for their future and for ours. The educators in the Lynn Public Schools have always worked hard for our students, and I have no doubt that they will do, sorry, I'm getting emotional, sorry, that they will do what needs to get done to move our students forward. It is going to take time, but time cannot be wasted in this work. We have begun to put systems in place to help align our work across all levels and to give our educators a voice in the process. We have added new, high-quality curriculum resources to help address the academic losses, and we will continue to look for other ways and materials that we can add so that we can help our students regain what they have lost. That's heavy, but I will take whatever, we will take whatever questions you might have.
Thank you, thank you. Do you want to make a cue here or just start with... Yeah, I was gonna say if anyone else...
So I guess I just want to start with thank you. I know that was probably not easy for you. It wasn't easy, I'm sure, for any of us to see either. Being an educator myself and looking at scores of my own students, you know, it's tough. It's hard to do, so I kind of get a double dose of it, which isn't exactly fun. But I guess, you know, my main concern would be, you talked about the DESI turnaround status. You know, that keeps coming around in my head and making sure we're good there. Is there any update on when that might continue or when they might, you know, start thinking about stepping in? Because obviously with our scores, that's a concern.
Yes, it's a concern for me as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say that when the state presented specifically to the urban superintendents, they did a totally separate, same presentation, but it specialized for the urbans because they were acknowledging that it was much more impactful for the urban districts than many of the other districts. It impacted everyone, but it significantly impacted the urbans. And although I want to say to you, I felt like they were saying they're not going to come down with a hammer, you know, right away. The fact that they're saying baseline is, it was good, that made us feel good, that, you know, we're starting from a starting point now and we need to work from there. But being in education for 37 years and knowing how the Department of Ed works, I have to imagine that accountability will come back. I hope it doesn't come back immediately. I hope they give districts time to really get the momentum and get things going before they start bringing the hammer down. But know that this collective group is committed to helping all of our schools to not have that happen.
Right, yeah, and I have no doubt of that. That wasn't what my question was, it's just...
No, I wish I could say that it's not going to happen, but I think inevitably it will. It's just a matter of when.
Yeah, I think especially, you know, at our elementary schools, too, you can see that, you know, it wasn't ideal for students to learn the way they did during the pandemic. And, you know, I think that's reflective in all the numbers. So I do hope DESI considers that, so thank you for your answer.
Deborah Galey.
This was really bad. So some of the questions I wrote down as we went through this and some of the questions I wrote down, some reason I didn't see the email that was sent out, and I briefly caught a glimpse of it, so I didn't write my questions. So one of my concerns is what are you doing for our students with disabilities? Like, especially in certain schools, I won't name them because you don't want me to, but we should be transparent here, but that was one of the concerns. I wondered if we were counting absences. Last year, we didn't have a, like, if you were out so long, you know, we used to have, like, if you were absent four times in a quarter, we would have, you would end up failing. So I don't know if we're doing that to make students more accountable. I would love to see this new baseline include community schools for really all of the schools that are in danger, which is a large portion of our elementary schools and middle schools and our high schools. I'm very worried about our high schools because if they put in that, you have to pass the MCAS to graduate, we will not be a positive. I'm very concerned with our students with disability and transparency. And I just like, what are you going to do for the high school Ls at that particular schools that was cited for not doing well with Ls? What are you doing for students with the disabilities? Just keeps going through my head. And that's what I'd like to know. Have you considered community schools? If so, have you spoke to principals that are doing well? What are they doing? What are teachers and principals doing that we may model in our district because they're doing things well? There's a school on here that's doing well? And that's pretty sad to say, a school on here doing well.
I agree.
So those are my questions.
So to, it was a lot of questions.
I know, it's like, keeps going on, but it always goes back with students with disabilities.
Let me start with the students with disabilities because, you know, I am special ed certified. I taught special ed for a number of years, so it does mean a lot to me. I am a strong advocate for inclusion and them being a main part of the building, like, not separate, like, they're part of our schools and the fabric of our schools. All of the curriculum that we use, the curriculum resources that we use, there is always special education administrators, people from the special education office, teachers from schools who are special educators are part of the process because we always want to make sure that the resources that we are purchasing and that we are vetting meet the needs of our students with disabilities. That being said, there's still a lot of work to do around how we are servicing our students with disabilities and how the rigor in which we are instructing them, the expectations. You know, it's not, it's not easy to teach in special education, but many of our teachers are very, very good instructors. And I think you're right, we need to tap into our strongest instructors in special education and hear from them. What are you specifically doing that is getting the progress that you have?
Last year, I took the time, and I mean, I took time, and I wrote a survey. And I surveyed all the staff, and I got 81 pages of responses, and I gave it to Dr. Todd Wiler, and a lot of these concerns showed up, but nothing was done. So it sort of like makes people think that our voices won't be heard. We spoke up, nothing happened, and then we get these test results. So that's why it's like, I want to know, what are you changing? What are you doing right now? Because these scores have to change right now. And I know, Deb, you, this was dropped in your lap, but...
But I do want to, I do want to say that those absences that I went over at the beginning of the presentation, if students were out because of COVID, it was five to 10 days. If a teacher was out, it was five to 10 days. That's, that's lost learning right there, and it's hard to get that back. So, and I'm not making excuses. So, and I'm not making excuses, please know that. I think I was pretty passionate in this, that we owe it to those children, to every, every, every graph we look at, every chart we look at, every data point we look at is a child.
That's right.
And so we owe it to them to make a difference for them. So, and I firmly believe that and are committed to that. But I don't want it to be felt that our teachers didn't do enough or didn't, like the scores are because of what we didn't do. These scores are a result of two and a half years of interrupted education.
I don't think it's the teachers that aren't, so I guess.
I'm not saying that you're saying that, but I just want to make sure that we're all, you know, understanding that the impact of COVID is, was immense. And every superintendent, I was in a superintendent meeting today. Everyone is talking about it, everyone. We're all heartbroken over what that illness did in education. Thank you.
Member Casiano, then Member Peña, then Member Capola.
Superintendent Rogiro, thank you so much for taking us through that presentation. I know it's a lot, it's very emotional. You know, I was here, I was here in the trenches, and it was very traumatizing for the staff, the children, a lot of us that were here to witness all of it. I do appreciate the transparency and the forwardness and the advocacy with everyone involved with trying to hit the pivot. This isn't a surprise. I think we were anticipating a significant blow in this data. And I do see the baseline as an opportunity as well. I think we did increase capacity in our L department and our SEL as well. So as we start to get into these transition points, we are in transition. We have, the pandemic, we're still recovering. We're still, like, we're still coming out of a crisis. And I do, I do believe in the folks at the table are committed. And it's very, it is alarming, but it is so important to remain poised and continue the progress with the, I really appreciate the key actions that you put on the table. These are, this isn't something that, this was just, this was planned out, and I understand the patience that is needed. And also, the reality is, is that we are coming from behind already. So when the pandemic hit a district that was already to the floor, we were at a disadvantage. The pivots have happened. I believe in folks here. I believe in people at this table. And I'm not gonna go through the data and start to chip away and say this is what it is. I do, I see that we have a plan, and I see that we're narrowing our focus. And I just, I just hope, I hope, and I pray for those children. Like you said, I pray for those children. I pray for the leaders at the table. I pray for everyone in this city. When we see the dropout rates and you look at the end of that sheet, there's positivity there. But now the awakening, as Member Gailey just pointed out, like now they're gonna start holding us to the fire again with MCAS testing, you know. Expect those hikes. We're gonna, we're gonna fill that. And I think that's something too that I know we're preparing for. It's just, it's a reality that we're in. I'm proud of the moves that we're making with the Student Opportunity Act and the resources that are coming to the table. I think we have to really be cautious in how we set our goals. And I know we have a strategic plan that we are implementing. Just in the forecast, that's gonna be revised. We need to hit pivots. And I think right now we need to capture what we're gonna do the next year, two, three, four, five years from now. I'm not gonna start attacking, I had questions, I'm not even gonna go into it. I actually want to highlight, some of the highlights, our L capacity. It's, I'm happy that we were able to, our formal, our former L increment, that's a, that's a positive motion during some really difficult times, remote learning. So thank you to the folks that were really putting it out there. That's not easy. It's probably one of the most difficult things to do in education. Hats off to the educators and people who were in the trenches.
Thank you, Member Casiano. We got, Member Peña, Member Capola, and then Member Magnolia.
Just to echo on what Brian, you know, thank you, thank you, Superintendent. It was, it was hard to give us that presentation. The reality is, this is where, this is where we at, you know, and then everyone was affected by the pandemic, you know. But there are still some positive things that we see there, you know, and I'm really grateful, you know, for those things. And the whole thing is, we know where we're at, and like where we're, let's move forward. You know, accountability is big, and I appreciate, you know, you know, us being here and, you know, being transparent about what's going on. But focus, you know, we have a plan, and let's move forward, you know. We know where we're at, and, you know, we don't, there's no need to point fingers. And this is where, we're all in this big, you know, puzzle together, and we need to do it for those kids, like you said. The kids have our priority. Everyone who's an educator does this for the children, you know. Sad, you know, the reality that this is where we're at, and we've got to move forward in the plan. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Member Capola.
Okay, I know that was very heartfelt on your part, Deb, and I know that you are as disappointed as we are. And I'm sure, you know, the staff is the same, the teachers, you know, the rain was right. We heard them loud and clear a year ago when they put it in the survey for us. And we should have started a year ago, you know, really dissecting it and giving them more support than they have. But I don't know, now in the Mass General Law, it talks about the MCAS, and it says each district in which more than 20% of the students score below Level 2 on this. So, you know, we have been in that before, and we're in it now. And my concern is, they asked for a plan, you know, the strategic plan is good, but some of the things they ask for is a plan to assess each student's strengths, weaknesses, and needs, and then a plan for summer school, after school, and other additional support. And the other thing, which not, nothing is mentioned here about parents, but it's a plan for involving the parents of students as described in the subgraph. So my thought is, you know, I mean, this is all good to just lay it out there, but a lot of this that's there is what teachers are stressing about. You know, all of the new curriculum that we have put out, all of the programs, all of the, all the stuff. And not only that, but, you know, what have we added on? Like if we have to send a report, and it states here that by November 1st, this report should have been in, and it probably is in. But how do we address those things? How do we, you know, when we talk about after-school stuff for support for kids, we're always saying we don't have enough of it. We've, you know, we, so if we're mandated to do it because we've reached the bottom, you know, what have we done since we saw these that we've added on?
Do you want, in terms of the after?
Yeah, do you have? We're making it a priority in our SO3 funding, and it needs to be a priority in terms of what each school wants to design. Correspondence was sent out to each and every school, asking them to think about what they wanted to do for, not only for after-school programming, for vacation, you know, during vacations, and also for summer school funding. And each school is looking at what they would like to do to meet the needs of their own learning community and submitting a plan by November 28th.
And I just want to add to that, that historically, even personal experience, whenever after-school programming happened or summer school programming happened, it was always the general ed kids and the special ed kids. They were separate. And so we had a long conversation about that and that it can't be separate. It needs to be, every school needs to include all their self-contained classrooms, all their inclusion students, like everyone should be part of it as a school. And now, obviously, there's challenges with that, transportation, right? But we need to do this. We need to do this for our students. So the schools are in the process of working through what, you know, working with their teachers. What do we want to offer? What is it gonna entail? Who is, you know, putting it out there to the families to have people sign up? And so they're working on that now. The other thing I just want to note is that each individual school also digs into their own data with their teachers. So, and I'm sure Mr. Member Dugan knows that because you probably did that at your school. Yeah, and what happens is each teacher gets data about their students, the ones they have in front of them, and can see the item analysis, can see more detailed information about individual students, where they scored, what their growth percentile was, what standards did they struggle with. And then the teacher works with those students on filling those gaps. And a lot of times, the programming after school and in the summer and on-vacation academies are all based on what teachers know about their students, and what then, that's how they develop what they're gonna offer. So there is much more detail put into it at the school level. And I wanted you all to know that we are making sure it is inclusive. It's one of our core values, and yet it's always separate. It needs to be.
And that's not new, though. That's, has that, how long has that gone on?
How long has what?
The studying and the.
Oh, no, no, that's not new. We've always looked at the school level, have always looked at item analysis, and, but here's the thing. With our equity work, one of the things that we have not been good about is looking at in detail, really digging in to the subgroup data. We look at it in general, but when you look at, so one of the graphs that I showed you was the percentage of students who meet and exceed. And I said, we need to dig into who are those kids? Are those all our white and Asian kids? Are any of them else? Right? And so we've got to, at every level, we have to go deeper into, why are our African-American, black students and our Latino students not scoring as high as our white and Asian kids? Everyone should be moving at the same rate, but it goes back to how we instruct, what resources we're using. Are they appropriate for students who have a second language? Are we valuing that they have something to bring to the table? Because I'm gonna tell you from personal experience, and I have sleepless nights sometimes when I think back at being a principal and a teacher with Ls. How many of my Ls that I had at Harrington School that we did not serve well? Because we were using assessments that really didn't meet their need, materials that didn't meet their need. We had many that moved and did well. We wouldn't have got out of Level 4 status if we didn't. But there were kids who we didn't meet. And it was because we were not teaching or looking at them in a way that they could access what we were offering. And so that's a huge focus for us now. We have 6,500 Ls in our district.
Yeah.
We have to teach differently, and it has to be language acquisition-based. These students have second languages. It's not easy because we've all been trained as monolingual teachers in a monolingual system. We don't work in a monolingual district. We just don't. It's not where we are.
The other thing that it says to address in the plan is involving the parents of students, so.
Yeah, and I would say to that, that teachers have conferences with parents all the time, after school, on the typical open houses. What I personally would love to see us dig into is what our open houses look like and how they're being used. You know, open house in the day of doing these fun events for people to come to is all well and good, but when we have scores like this, it needs to be more data-driven. It needs to be more individual conferences with a schedule. It needs to be more, here's some things you can do to help your child at home in these skills so that we can bring them up. Parents want to know, how can I help? We need to, we need to rethink, and many schools have, but not all. And so we really, you know, with data like this, we need to look at those open houses differently.
And have the parents seen their child's.
So we get state reports. Every child gets a report. Those already were sent out. The principals got them a few weeks ago, yeah. And those have already been sent home. They get them in languages that they need. And then you, I know a question was asked about parents being notified of any teacher who is not licensed. That's an obligation of ours as well. Charlie Gallo does that, and he is in the process of doing that. Or has that already gone out? It's in the process. It's in the process. Those letters will be going out soon.
Okay, and some of the questions, I'm not gonna name them all, but one in particular is pupil, pupil teacher ratios in class size, which is very concerning to me. I can't go anywhere. I mean, I just went to the Classical fundraiser at the Prince Spaghetti, a great meal. But teachers who are sitting in classrooms, and they're saying, I cannot get a child ready for biology. They're testing this year with the number of kids I have in my class. I mean, it's everywhere we go. It's a serious concern. I mean, we can't just keep saying, you know, we don't have room or something. We've got to get creative, you know, in some other way. We just have to.
I will say that in both high schools, we are putting another portable. So Classical will have a new six-room portable, and English is getting also a six-room portable that's being added to the portable that's out there. So it actually will be a 12-room portable. So those are in motion and will be there for, I think, well, at least for September, maybe even in the spring, depending on how.
So that's a whole lost year for the kids that are in those classes this year. That's, that's why we can't get out of the hole. We just can't.
I know.
We, these teachers are killing themselves working at this. And, and we have so many non-certified ones, you know, that we've hired. I mean, we can't leave a class empty, but I, my concern is, what do they, what are they getting? They really need to be, you know, held up.
Yeah, the teacher certification side of it, the licensure side of it, I have to say, is a national issue. There's a teacher shortage. It's well-known now. It's spoken about a lot. We try very hard to get licensed. We're always looking for licensed people. And even if we hire someone who's not licensed, the schools are providing those teachers with additional support, like from department heads or CITs, or so that we're keeping, you know, building their skills. But that's one of those things that, to some extent, is out of our control because there's not, we're trying, we, believe me, we keep, any job that's open is out there for, you know, to, for someone to apply to. Principals are, I sign so many, you know, approved to hire. They are letting people go who they feel are not good. We've 90-dated more people than I ever remember because they just do not meet our standards. So they're only, and we've had those conversations, only keep the people who you know are worthy and have the capacity to do what we need them to do because we can't afford it for our kids.
We cannot. Thank you.
All right, then Member Magnolia, and then Member Peña.
So thank you very much for the presentation. I know a lot of people have talked about, we have been in the trenches, and I just want to give the perspective of a parent who had a child in that Lynn Public School system throughout the pandemic, to say that. To say that, that experience was traumatizing for me because I'm in a dual-income house with two people who could work remotely and with a high level of education and still managing our child's remote learning was challenging and, and, and quite stressful. And, and I found myself in the best possible scenario, like the best. My job was not under any kind of threat. We had food. We stayed healthy. You know, the absenteeism that you were talking about was not an issue when, when the children went back for fully in-person. You know, we felt comfortable masked, et cetera, going back, you know, had to shrink our pod as a result. So we were in the perfect scenario. And still, this experience was traumatizing. And I'm using that word on purpose, not to usurp Brian's field of expertise here. But I don't want us to lose that word because you used one term when you were talking about the strategic plan going forth, and that is to foster a sense of belonging. Okay, one of the things I've noticed for last year, that was the first year back fully in-person, but that I've seen this year already, is that the kind of conflict, and again, my child's in elementary school, so the number of kids getting detention for acting out. At my daughter's class, they were screaming at lunch, right? So anything from the fights that we've witnessed to just what I'd call general mayhem, right? All of that is a direct result of the trauma of the past couple of years. And while I understand that disciplinary procedures that principals enact are kind of boilerplate, I think that we cannot underestimate pushing these kids to learn more, to learn faster, to catch up without simultaneously addressing that level of trauma is going to re-traumatize them. So rather than seeing this gradual uptick, what we're going to see is that some kids will succeed because maybe they have the supports at home. And other kids, that dropout rate, my guess is, is going to skyrocket if we cannot take that belonging, that soft factor, and amp it up. I know the things that were successful for the kids that were acting out last year were teachers that were highly caring, that had good relationships with parents. You can't just make that happen, though, right? So the question is, how can schools, how can individual classrooms, but also how can principals look at this concept of belonging and adjust how they approach discipline, how they approach communication, so that parents who are in perfect situations and were traumatized, and I know ninety percent of Lynn Public School students did not have parents in perfect situations, can feel like they are connected to the schools in such a way that they can be partners in this concept of belonging? Because if we tracked those numbers with discipline issues, we would see a correlation. If we tracked them with how many parents lost employment during the pandemic, if we could do the individual aggregation, we would, we would be able to see exactly how that's playing out and who's bouncing back. Again, we'd have our why. So I, I, I don't think it's so much a question as saying that trauma-informed practice approaches this kind of need to push all the academics in a very specific way. And I know we have a brand-new Director of Social and Emotional Learning, and I'm sure I'm, like, speaking to her perfect language in saying this, but I have witnessed this on the playground. I have witnessed this in the kids at birthday parties. I have witnessed this in, oh, so-and-so got detention today or suspension today. I've heard more stories like that since the pandemic, since they went back, than I ever did before. And so I think that this soft skill, the stuff that Massachusetts General Law does not require, is going to be the key to our success.
I just want to thank you for that because what you said is a hundred percent accurate. I will say that we've already started having conversations around how we can support the schools, our teachers, our parents. We've, I don't know how many years ago it was, Tina, the de-escalation training that was developed by the clinicians, 2018. We are resurrecting that. The clinical, clinical staff, under the leadership of Tina, are looking at that to present to teachers, to get, I mean, we've got a lot of new people who never did it. And so that they have a skill set of how they can help children de-escalate their, their emotions, their feelings, their, you know, lack of coping. We've also talked about, you know, helping parents by sharing information like that. We've had conversations about needing like a swing space in schools so that you're not just suspending a kid or expelling a kid, that there is a place that we can have that student go, get support, get some counseling or restorative work with them to then reintegrate back. Because quite honestly, FECTO can't be the only place, right? And FECTO has certain parameters for students to go there. And, you know, we can't just keep sending kids out. And I know in the hearings that I've sat in, I start every meeting with, we have an obligation to educate you, and I want you to be successful. But some of the behaviors are extreme. But we need to, as a district, figure out how we can get them the help they need within Lynn Public Schools and then reintegrate. So thank you for bringing that up.
Tiffany, if I may, also in our approach to the curriculum, Tina and I are having multiple conversations and with her team also about not making SEL a standalone. You know, SEL competencies and SEL curricula needs to be in all of our content areas. And that really needs to be our approach moving forward so that it's throughout the school day, through, so it's throughout every single curriculum. And that is how we're going to approach it in terms of a curricula.
I don't know if Dr. Magnolia is looking at my notes, but I was going to touch upon that. And just a second, what Donna was talking about, engaging parents and stuff. Like, one of the things I like to see is like, like getting parents involved, right? But kind of look, bringing them as a partnership into this and, and reaching out in different languages, you know? Because I know a lot of many parents who don't speak English that reach out to me. They want to get involved, but we need to, we need to share that information. We need to have forums. We have community input for a whole bunch of things. How about for getting our kids up to date with our school, with MCAS scores? Like, let's have, let's, let's bring them in. Let's get, let's get input from the Latino community, other, other languages that don't speak English. Get the parents involved. It's hard when, at home, they don't speak the language, the student, you know, because I, that's, that's how, that's how I grew up. Like, I spoke English, but my, my parents at home didn't, you know? And it's a tough, and parents do want to get involved, but we need to reach out to them and not in, in a forum to like get them engaged. Like, you bring them in a partnership. Let's see what, what can you bring? How, how can we all work, work with this together? Because it's a problem that affected everyone, you know? Like Dr. Magnolia said, everyone's, you know, had the trauma, you know? And, and then we need to get back. And, and one of those ways is like, let's get the families involved, you know? And let's, let's, let's reach out and, and send, you know, bullet points, you know? Reach out in, in different languages, you know? So I'm, I'm pretty sure you, you've talked about that, but let's, let's get with it, you know? It's time, you know? We need to move forward with this. Thank you.
Well, thanks, but I just want to thank Superintendent Rizorio for the, for the presentation and all the, the school committee members for their, the, the questions and comments. Obviously, I think we, we all want to turn this around. And, and it's, one of the things I think is particularly frustrating is looking at some of these graphs that go back several years and seeing some of the painstaking progress we had made before the pandemic. You know, you look at that absentee rate that was flat for years and years and just starting to bend as, you know, we had made that a goal of the district, and then for it to, to blow up like that. And, and that, that's frustrating. And I, I'm so glad that this whole team is as motivated as they are to address that. I, I also just want to take a minute to, to reflect on, you know, theme that Member Magnolia touched on is that while we are using these scores as a tool, as a baseline, we obviously look at what happened in 2022 and know that that wasn't just what happened in 2022. That was a cumulative effect of a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic. And the learning is our top priority here. During that period, we were also dealing with hundreds of people passing away from COVID-19. We were dealing with family members who were sicker than they ever have been, sicker for, some became sick for weeks and months that couldn't get the care that they needed. Essential workers that were risking their safety and sometimes livelihood to keep their family safe, day in and day out, in an incredibly hectic and scary time that hit our community harder than anyone around the Commonwealth almost. And this is no surprise that we are now left to pick up the pieces, and we will, because that's our job. And I am excited that we are coming to this conversation with a lot of great ideas and questions about how to do that. We're coming to the conversation with a great team of folks that are, that are doing that. Obviously, the administrators here and, and most importantly, our faculty and staff that, that do this every day in, in, in the classrooms with students directly, one-on-one. And, you know, I, I think it's also striking and needs to be part of the conversation we're having that in the course of these several years that we're thinking about, the demographics of the district is, are being, is being transformed before our eyes in, in adding to the work that we all have to do together to make sure that people achieve the language fluency that we know they, they, they need to succeed. And it's, it's a huge task that we have before us to address that trauma, to continue to work with this really important population. It's one of the things that I love most about the Lynn Public Schools is that we embrace that responsibility for students that are coming from all over the world. And it, and it has changed in the last several years in terms of what that, that, that ask is. And so I think it's really important, you talk about the accountability system, that when we are having those conversations at the state level about accountability, we are also including the impact that we had to deal with in Lynn and the student population that we have in Lynn. And some of the, the point that Member Coppola made about the, the need for classrooms here is I think we've made some great progress there in things like adding the Discovery Academy and adding their early college and, and doing some of the, the portable classrooms. We're doing everything we possibly can think of here in the Lynn Public Schools. But we are also tasked with educating students in overflowing classrooms because we take everybody, and we have to, and we're really proud of that. But when we talk about the, the accountability, I think we are obviously very grateful beneficiaries of the investment we've received through the Student Opportunity Act and have made incredible strides in putting that money to great work. And I think we saw some of that in the, in the strategies going forward. But we, we really also need to be continuing to put front and center in the context of, of how we're doing the, the, the reform that's need, needed on the capital side of how education works in our, in our school buildings and the need for more classrooms. So I just wanted to, to add that context.
Thank you, ma'am. Member Castellanos.
So we have, so the, the castle theory, what we, for SEL, we have a, a significant model that we were presented with during the SEL interviews. I, I feel like everyone on the school committee should be mailed, well, we should email. Could we email that to everybody just so folks have that, that background? As it is a, a key action item, I think it'd be good to have that, that background information because it is something that drives our district, has been driving. It's like, it's not just a buzzword. It is a lot that goes into it. And I think it'd be helpful just to have the members take a look at what that is.
Thank you. Next section is communications and information. Before we dive into the superintendent's report, I just, at the behest of our search consultant from MASC, Mr. Kucher, wanted to share an update on the search. So we are close to winding up interviews with the search committee, the screening committee. And we, Mr. Kucher will be sharing the interview guide that was used by this search committee with, with all of the school committee. And that will kick off the, the process that, that is with the school committee to figure out how we would like to conduct the finalist interviews in terms of what questions to ask and how to sort that out. I think in the past, you know, we tried to do some coordination so that we know, we're not planning to ask the same question. And, and Mr. Kucher can guide us through that process. So not only are we prepared, but we also correctly navigate the various open meeting considerations that go along with that.
Okay. All right. Well, I always start with a quote, right? So here we go. "The elevator to success is out of, is out of order. You'll have to use the stairs one step at a time," by Joe Giard. This week has been very hard for many reasons. What is clear, however, is how our community at large and our community of educators wrap their arms around the need, whether it's wrapping our arms around families who have had great loss, supporting our staff through a difficult rollout of many new resources, and after reviewing our MCAS data, recognizing the urgency of our response to support our students in recovering from the loss of learning. This impact is profound, and our collective distress is real. As I said in my presentation, we must remember that every bar that we look at, every chart we analyze is a student who needs us. This is not going to be easy work, and it will not happen quickly. But we must move forward and wrap our arms around our students and help them move forward in their education. Just a few updates. We will be conducting the Youth Risk Behavior Survey to all middle school and high school students to provide us with data to fully understand where the most need is in their health and social, emotional well-being. Our monthly newsletter continues to go out to our school leaders, which I gave you a copy of so you could see, with plans to expand this to all staff so that everyone is kept up to date on current events. And the Pickering Building Project has entered our visioning workshop and education plan development stage. We held our first of three visioning workshops last night with family members from feeder schools as well as the existing middle school, community members, teachers, and district leaders. The meeting was facilitated by New Vista Design to develop educational, architectural, and community priorities. We began collecting input around the vision for the learning goals of the new Pickering Middle School and what that will look like through the design of the building. The other two visioning sessions are scheduled for November 16th and December 7th, from eight, six to eight. And a community meeting will be held on November 30th to share the ideas from the first two meetings and to get feedback from other community members who are interested in participating in this process. This is exciting work, and I look forward to the process, the progress to come. Information about that community meeting will be sent out so that those who are interested can, can access it. In closing, I want to ensure the entire school committee and the community at large that the Lynn Public School staff are all committed to doing what needs to get done to move our students in a positive direction. Learning is hard, and together we can achieve.
Motion to adjourn.
Before it's seconded. Member Castellanos.
Would it be possible to receive a, a copy of that youth, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey?
Uh, yeah. Can we get a copy? Yeah, I'm pretty sure we can get a copy. Oh, we do? Okay. Yes, we can get that too.
Thank you. Is a motion on the table? Any second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Your turn. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.